The Bahamas and the Bahamas Chamber of Commerce. So those three entities came together to create a nonprofit known as the Access Accelerator. And the reason why we're here today is that we find that the message, while you may have been hearing some things in the media, you've been seeing things on LinkedIn and in the newspaper, sometimes you need to have a face-to-face conversation to understand more about what we do and to determine whether you would like to benefit from the services. I want to say proudly that I am a member of the Kalani neighborhood. So it's only fitting that this is actually the first location in the province where we're doing this type of meeting. In the next, over the next two to three months, we're going to do about three or four of these throughout different communities in the province. But we're hoping to make clusters of those communities so we don't have to do this 30 other places, so 20 other places. But definitely you may have heard that we've been going to the family islands as well. We've been to Abaco already, we've been to Tsuma, we've been to Long Island. We're on our way to Grand Bahama. We look for an business. Wow, almost the whole room. And then would I be right in imagining that the rest of you are thinking about going into business? No one else is thinking about starting a business? Everyone has a few. All right, now those of you who are thinking about starting a business, any of you have been the type that have been thinking about this for like the last five years? Or for a number of years, you've been toying around with the night in your head, but you feel like you're finally ready to move ahead with it? Anybody in that rocket? Okay, and what I'm seeing in this room, the only thing that's different from other rooms is that the majority of you are already in business. Many of the other gatherings we've been in, most of the individuals were startups. And many people, when it comes to a startup, you take quite a bit of time before you launch into it. And it's because it's an investment, it's a time investment, it's definitely... One of the buzzwords that you have heard from us is advisory services. Now what in the world does that mean? When you walk into our center, like Skambridge did today, and you meet with an advisor, that advisor's job is to sit with you and basically listen, understand what it is you are currently doing or what it is you would like to do. In listening, we're able to help you go through tried and proven processes to develop that concept. For some people, if you're already in business, we analyze what you're currently doing and figure out ways that things can be done better. For example, we found out quite a number of persons who are operating home-based businesses that were technically manufacturing companies and could benefit from manufacturing concessions. But because they never really saw themselves as a manufacturing company, for example, if you bake goods at home, you manufacture. And as a result of bringing those goods together to create a product, to manufacture a cake, the government has provided concessions for you. So as simple as that level of thinking data. So for example, we have individuals in tourism, in manufacturing, in the flow of that particular industry. And if there isn't an active industry in the Bahamas for that business, then we automatically go to our neighbors. We have subscriptions to different data pools where we can look at the same industry in another country and help you extrapolate what that would mean in the Bahamas. So I want you to get the idea that this is not a running the center, you print out a plan and then you head to get some money. The whole idea is to first use the advisory services to help you understand your business, strategize it in a way where, one, you have conviction, you have conviction and full ownership of the concepts. But at the same time, when you communicate, you understand what you're doing. So you could sell better when you're trying to get contracts, when you're out there negotiating with suppliers. You have a different level of understanding of what you need, when you need it, and how you need it. The next step for some persons is training. So even though you might not understand your business and you have it structured, it may be in an area that, you know what? I'm not good with developing human capital. I may need help with how do I handle my employees? Or I may not be good with managing my stock and my inventory and that sort of thing. It's our responsibility to understand where the challenges and deficiencies may be and to bring together like entrepreneurs so that we can reduce costs with the training and make sure that you're equipped with the things that you need. So you may have heard a lot of changes recently with respect to business license requirements. So everyone now, when you go to renew, there's a requirement for financials. Well, in the Small Business Development Center, that's also a requirement for us. If you access funding through the Small Business Development Center, you will have to have financial software, financial management software in place. Because there's no way for us to be able to give you the ongoing advice that's required if you don't have that in place for us to look and see what's been going on in your business. That said, you're going to have hundreds of people between now and, let's say, next June, trying to learn how to use that software, how to understand the printouts, what does it mean? What inferences can I make from that? So we're going to be putting on a whole series of training opportunities, whether you're with the center or not, because it's required just to renew your license. We're hoping to assist many Bahamian business owners with understanding how to use that type of software. So we've dealt with advisory services, we've dealt with some type of training. There are a number of events for networking. So for example, I think next week, the Chamber of Commerce, one of our partners, they're putting on a power practice about the WTO and our possible accession. So what they're specifically doing for small businesses though, they're going to tailor make some of the questions to something simple like, what does this mean to a small business? Why should I care about this? Or is this just for the guys, you know, operating in $10, $20, $30 million a year? Am I vulnerable? Am I more vulnerable than they are? Those types of questions you can expect to come out of that event. So again, it's our responsibility, whether we put on the event directly or we just stay connected to others who are putting on the events, to make sure that you always have a constant string of stimulus coming from multiple directions to help you with the development of your business. There's also a major category for advocacy. And I will start off by saying that I'm really happy that the government in the Bahamas is supporting this program to the extent that they are, because a lot of the advocacy is actually with the government. A lot of the help that small businesses need and the questions are directly with government agencies. So today alone, I've gotten two requests with respect to credit card non-applications. There are people who need assistance with exemptions, there are people who need assistance with central bank applications, SEC, the Securities Commission applications. Definitely lots of people have come forward needing assistance with the Department of Inland Revenue. And so as these items come up, it's up to us to help with the connection. So we're not taking on those responsibilities. But you should be able to have someone that you can pick up the phone and call and say, "Look, here's the challenge I'm having with my business, here's the agency I'm having that challenge with, can you help me?" And our job is simply to connect the dots and monitor the process. And if necessary, you know, if we need to go with you, if that's a part of the mandate between your advisor and the business, and that's a part of what we expect to do. Advocacy is also on another level though. A lot of the small businesses support larger businesses. So you have this business-to-business relationship. In order for the circulation of, let's call it, success to happen in the economy, you can't have a glass ceiling between the big businesses and the small businesses. So it's up to us to make extra linkages between all of the small businesses and the large businesses such that you have a steady flow of access to new customers, access to markets. So rather than you having to sell to 2,000 people, if you're selling to one big client that sells to 2,000 people as a small business, it completely transforms the profitability of your business. So we're finding that you have a number of entrepreneurs that are producing things like pebbles and jams and arts and crafts and that sort of thing. And candles. And you want to get access to the six million interests that we keep on hearing about that comes in and out of the Bahamas. So how do we as a center create an opportunity for you to have that access? So we're creating relationships with major hotels. As a matter of fact, the BHTA is also a partner of the SBDC. BHTA is the Bahamas hotel that's been going on for months now that focuses on local sourcing. And local sourcing is the buzzword for access to the big guys in tourism. So we don't have to create the real with that, we just need to make sure that you're connected to them and that, and we just monitor the process. We monitor how successful you've been with accessing those hotels, what are the margins? Have they been negotiating fairly with you and what can we do to assist? Negotiation is seeming to be also a major part of the advocacy. Again, if you can't afford, you know, a business advisor at the rates that probably are out there right now, you would not have thought about, do I need a mediator? Do I need a negotiator when I go in to get this particular contract, whether it's with government or some other big company? Do I need assistance pushing hard to get the margins that I would like? And for many people, yes, you do. And we're here to help you with that. So the last piece that, for most people, is the first piece, is access to capital. There's always this statement in the Bahamas that, you know, you can get a loan for a car faster than you can get it for a business. And just again, I like these little surveys. Any of you still believe that that is true? Okay. This time, rather than you put your hand up, just quickly say yes. So I think that's unanimous. And that's unfortunate. The truth is, though, in our research, there are at least two of the banks doing significant portfolios in small business loans. But honestly, it was refreshing for me to see that that was happening. But I think, again, a lot of people just don't know. But with the Access Accelerator, our job is to help you strategize your documents, your business plan, your proposal in a way where you're in the best position to get the best access to capital. So let me sort of explain what that means. We're creating a system where, based on the government's support and the funding from the government, you're definitely going to have access to funding, whether it's directly or indirectly through financial institutions. However, we want to create an environment where these financial institutions now begin to buy for your business rather than you having to crawl behind them for their help. And what that means is the power is now in the hand of the entrepreneur. If you have a great idea, let's say you do have some experience already, or even if you don't, the way you put forward that idea and the success that you incrementally create should have the banks running behind you. Because at the end of the day, when you start out as a small business, likely you will grow and grow over time. Especially with access to the type of advisory services for the first three years of your existence through the Small Business Development Center, the expectation is growth. The whole point of it is growth. We have to show that we've assisted you with creating economic impact. So that means, one, an increase in sales, two, hopefully an increase in employees, three, hopefully you can assist with reducing the cost, either your total imports or the cost of your imports. We want to increase the ability to export. And then because you will be regularized and there's a greater level of compliance, there should be an increase in government revenue as well at the end of the day. So the whole system is to produce economic impact. And the way we've designed your access to capital is to make sure you have the most competitive rates. So today, you know, we hear stories about individuals who do have business loans. And some of them are competitive rates and some of them are credit card rates. So our job is to make sure, leverage the government's involvement in the program to give you the best possible position with the banks as possible for your business. So you lay it out, advisory, training, events and networking, advocacy, and access to capital. Before I go any further, is it okay if I take some questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so before we move on to anything else there, any questions at that point?
You didn't name the two banks where I can go. Small business owners.
Well, here's what I prefer to do. When we announce the specific banks that are going to be working with the Small Business Development Center, which we hope to do that very soon, then I would gladly mention all of those names. I don't want to give any free PR unnecessarily, but those two banks, you know, are very visible with their support to small businesses. But for some reason, you know, like I said, a lot of people still don't know about it. But I'm reluctant to say that specifically because I don't necessarily have that permission. Those disclosures were in closed meetings and I was just surprised about the millions of dollars of their support in small businesses.
So Ms. Blair, bet a potential investor approached the bank. Just say they approached the bank before they approach your organization. Is these banks, would they be mandated to contact you? Or that rests on my responsibility to come to you and say, "Well, I went to Bank XYZ and I got the business plan, I want a startup loan." So that responsibility is mine, or the bank will sort the candidates for you, sort of profile them, and say, "Here, Ms. Blair, this is somebody's view." How'd that work?
That's a very good question. In the relationship or the partnership that we're building with the financial institutions, the expectation is that it will be both ways. And the reason is that the banks are recognizing that the probability of performance for those loans is higher when those clients are in direct relationship with the center. And so some of them have already started to talk about the way they had planned to expand their advisory services. And now if the small business clients are coming through us, they may not need to. Because a lot of that expertise will be in-house with us rather than them having to expand their operation in their bank. So if you go to the bank first and it's a small business loan, they won't be mandated or forced to say, "Look, you should go to the Small Business Center." But in order to assist their own bottom line, I won't be surprised if they would not recommend it to you. But you won't be forced to. If you come to us on the back end, we won't send you to one particular bank. We're going to, we're going to have a confidential relationship with a group of banks that buy into or that sign onto the program. And if it's a loan that you require, because it may be a loan, it may be equity, if there's a loan, we will send it to all of the appropriate banks based on those who've said that, "Look, we would like this type of business profile, this type of industry, this type of individual." And hopefully we'll have those banks bidding for your opportunity. Sorry, I know I've been on one side because I might have a strong right eye, but let's go here and then we'll come up on this side. Definitely both. As long as we're assisting you with expanding with those economic impact targets that I mentioned. So we have to be able to show that there's some expansion that you would like to create that will increase your sales, that will expand your employee base, hopefully. And we're really pushing to increase exports and to any extent we can reduce imports, we're going to try and do that. So the Department of Inland Revenue, they've provided us with our data all the way back to 1986. And let me say upfront that that data again is confidential data. Absolutely. So from the minute that you come in for... Well, I can't speak to that because, you know, I don't want to put myself in any liability issues. But we've put in place policies to safeguard against it. At the end of the day though, if for some reason something is stolen, we have the NDAs in place. If you need to go ahead and take a legal recourse, we will have signatures not only from the center but also from the financial institutions so that you can go ahead and do so. But hopefully, that's, hopefully that's not the way we're going to have to go. We have four full-time employees and we have an additional four part-time employees and we have 14 advisors. So in total, we're looking at about 20, I believe. They've all had to sign for confidentiality. Well, we still have to do the best that we can do. And secrecy is important because if you really care about helping the client develop, which all of our employees do, you want to keep that private until they're able to promote it. I mean, if you let the goods out of the bag first, then you're basically messing up the entire strategy. So if you have a meet with the advisors, you'll see that they're personally invested in everyone's success. So I seriously do not think that you'll have a problem with them, you know, carelessly sharing information. Yes, ma'am? Oh, sorry, yeah, right after, I promise. Okay, so the Economic Empowerment Bill, I don't know if I'm using the right words. So right now, they're, I think they've launched already an online process for claiming that exemption. I'm not going to stand and purport to be an expert on that. However, our advisors are in touch with the Over the Hill community who basically govern in Ministry of Finance, between Ministry of Finance and OPM, a lot related to that. So if you are specifically in that zone or you would like to do business in that zone, we will broker the conversations to make sure that you have whatever you need to be able to do.
That's the information I'm seeking. And that if I'm in the zone and I'm setting up a business, then I have my products, my goods and services that I'm going to be offering. Then there are certain things that I love to bring in. And I need a one, two, three, four step in how I go about proceeding to contacting the various departments to be able to bring in the goods, right? If there's no point in me bringing it in and then finding that you have not completed your part of the program and having all your ducks lined up.
I can tell you, I can tell you that they do have quite a bit of material produced already with the one, two, three steps. In some cases, even if you're buying what you would like to have as inputs in your business locally, they have a process where there can still be the customs consideration for that product that's already here. And so there are lots of things that have already progressed with helping. Our job is to make sure I connect you and if necessary, we will be with you during that process.
So do you have an online system whereby you're at stage one, this is the first thing that I have to do?
Can I just say? The 28th, they're going to have a town meeting for persons who specifically need that information.
But to help you until the 28th, I don't have the website in front of me. But if you were to Google it, I know that they have published quite a bit already. And if you reach out to the center tomorrow, 604-1051, I'm going to give that information again before I have to look. Then colleagues there will also be able to direct you off this in that department. Okay, you wait patiently.
Just a question on, a little bit of a difficult one, one where you have a patent, maybe not, you want something patented? But I guess a product you have a patent with as well as, if you're coming in without the files and the idea may be pretty big or whatever, would you, would the government or the government assistance get you to develop it? Or would you still have to go through the法院 and develop with that, because there could be a risk?
Okay, so we've had specific conversations about patent development because of all the intricacies involved in it. First of all, let me say that if you have a business idea and it includes a patent, that's huge, okay? I think if we can encourage more and more Bahamians to literally create new things and patent it, at the end of the day, who knows, we may end up with the new windshield wiper that becomes, you know, a foregone conclusion that you've had it all your life and a Bahamian created it. You know what I mean? We want to create that type of new things coming out of the center from Bahamians. So I've done patent before, I'm not boasting, but it's a very hard thing to do without legal assistance, okay? If you just, just to do the initial research, you could be there literally for hours on end going through a million pieces of data, for example, on US Patent Office, to be able to find whether it is actually a brand new thing. And in many cases, in the first round, you find out that somebody has already created and then you have to make alterations to it to be able to make it novel for you. So there's a product development stage that has absolutely no returns. And that initial stage needs to be treated more so like an incubator stage. And so there's been a discussion at the board level, you know, I cannot say definitively yet, but there's a discussion at the board level to use a certain type of funding to help with that initial pilot program that includes the patent process. We obviously are not patent lawyers, so we will have to get assistance on your behalf for that legal side of it. But that's treated almost as a soft cost because it's development cost. And then once you have a prototype, you have it protected, then there's a whole new cycle of... There's even a process for evaluating the value of that patent. And other countries have created regulations around that. They have very defined departments that do that assessment so that you actually end up with a certificate that tells you your patent or your patent is an asset and at this point is valued at X amount. It would take time for us to get there and we'll begin any promises expected of that. But that's where we're hoping to go because we want to encourage many Bahamians to create new patents. So your business plan will be in phases. Phase one will be product development and handling. Phase two will be the testing and collection of data. And then phase three may be a bigger funding environment for you. So you're really going to have to be prepared to go to law hall for that type of development. The government of Bahamas in this program, we're looking at funding as low as 1,000, as high as 500,000. And so it's not the normal program or the previous programs where, you know, you're pretty much looking at small amounts of working capital or equipment. We do have a program in place that can support, you know, larger projects but still within the context of micro, small and medium businesses. Right, sorry, thank you. So the two critical associations that we're discussing partnerships with, one of them is relevant to your question. So the Bar Association, I don't know if you're aware, but in the last couple of weeks, the Bar Association and the Bahamas fake ministries, they put on a session specifically to help with legal aid and they had a component on business legal aid. So we're hoping to expand that and define a consistent way with the Bar Association to be able to lend legal assistance, not just with developing patents, but contracts has become a major part of a lot of small businesses. Sometimes you have, you know, legal issues that arise that you just can't afford, you know, Hickson Johnson or something like that to advocate on your behalf. And so we're appreciative of the work of the Bar Association and their willingness to continue that conversation so that we can have an in-house legal aid process to be able to help into the businesses, even when it comes down to your corporate structure and the way you incorporate and protect yourself and your family. That also requires legal assistance. We will begin the same type of relationship discussion with BICA, that's the Accounting Association, so that all of the heavy lifting with getting people onboard with their financial management software, that that's not 100% on us, we're able to share that among our partners so that we can all get up to speed and fast over you. Any other questions? Okay, so what we want to do, what I would like to do from this point is to make sure you go ahead and register. Folks, when we first started talking about the Small Business Development Center, only, what, six weeks ago? I think September 24th was the first day of our meeting with clients. I think we should say all rise for the entrance of the Prime Minister. You may be seated. When we started September 24th and we were telling everybody to sign up, at that point, on September 24th, when we met with the first time, we were already at 800 persons registered. Okay, six weeks later, or technically eight weeks later, we're basically at 1,600 persons registered. And so please, it literally takes five seconds on your phone, you really should do it even before the Prime Minister walks up. Because every few... Oh, mentorship, yes, thank you. Every few minutes, someone is signing up. I mean, when I go to the breakfast lady and we're talking to people, people are signing up. And you go on the bike line and you're talking to people, people are signing up. So please, don't wait. It doesn't hurt, even if you're not sure about what you want to do and why you want to do it, it doesn't hurt to sign up so that when that appointment comes, by then, you would have done a lot of research, you would have had a lot of time to think, and you can also interact with some of the tools on our landing page. When we graduate to a webpage, there'll be additional tools there so that you will be ready when that appointment comes. But if you wait, the longer you wait, the longer you're going to be pushed for. And the reality is, we cannot expand fast enough to deal with all of that demand. So it will take time, it will take a straight into, you know, maybe next year, June, to service the initial interest. And the more we do meetings like this, the more people sign up. So please, you know, that's a ready... Um, so please, you know, that's already a hundred and twenty seconds since I last said it. I hope you have signed it already, because you've really, it really only takes about five seconds. Um, but let's talk about mentorship. Uh, my colleague, Mr. Parker, just, um, I, yeah, so the website is www.s as in small, b as in business, d as in development, c as in center, bahamas.com. S, B, D, C, bahamas.com. So mentorship is, is a major part of the services. I, I sort of indirectly spoke about it when we talked about our three-year relationship. So when you sign with the center, and we go through your business development process, and you're successful with accessing capital, right afterwards, the next step is to help you set up. Whether you're an existing business or, or a startup, there's still some compliance, um, issue, matters that we wanna make sure that you take all of the boxes to. After that, you're assigned not just an, an advisor for your next three years, but you're also assigned a mentor. The mentor is very different from the advisor. The advisor's responsibility is to plug in with you once a week, look at your financial management, um, soft, uh, software at least once a week remotely, and give you any of that financial advice that you require. The mentor is there to encourage you, open doors for you, um, you know, answer, uh, global questions. Um, in, in some cases, if you're in a particular industry, the hope is to match you with a mentor that has experience in that industry. And where we come to that, you know, we're, we're matching persons with experienced individuals who've managed businesses in the past and likely would have dealt with some of the same challenges that you will go through in your first three years of operating. And so there's some people who've come to the center, and that's all they've come for. They don't want money, they don't want the business advisory, um, services. They really just need someone to be with them through the journey so that they can have a phone number to pick up and call, and maybe sometimes just to make introductions. Um, unfortunately, this is society, if you know. So mentor could be very, very useful. If there are no other questions, um, I would like to take this opportunity. I don't know if I do the introduction directly, or if I invite you to, to come back, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Executive Director Adam Blair. At this time, I feel just put a hand together and welcome the most honorable Dr. Hubert Davis, Prime Minister.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to apologize for being late. I, I'm still a parent, and I had to attend the Parent Teachers Association meeting. So that's where I was. But I wanna thank Devanya, and still learn on the other clarity team for doing excellent job and informing you as best as they can. I'm sure I could not do as good a job as Devanya would have done in how to access, um, this program and how to succeed. You would note that she has a pre and a post-program to ensure that they give you the greatest opportunity to succeed in your business. The only thing I want to say, um, before I, before I close, the only thing I want to say, out of the five million dollars, two hundred registered loan, two hundred and fifty would be given as a grant. That is, that would be given to you, and you do not have to repay the government that grant. But that would be given preferentially to impoverished areas. Over there, Camp Road, Camp Hill, Anglistown, um...
St. Bonaventure.
Lots of... I'm second to Foxville. More than, my blessing not impoverished. But more of the impoverished area, forty million dollars would be given as a grant. For those from the Farming Islands, two hundred thousand dollars would be set aside as grants for Farming Island. Those are money that would be, monies that would be given to those individuals. They give them a green star, and they would not have to pay that back. I think the whole concept, they, if they qualify through Devanya's program, if you qualify, let's say for, um, eighty thousand dollars, um, the banking, you may possibly obtain sixty thousand as grant, and you borrow only twenty, which means though you're receiving eighty thousand, sixty would have been a gift to you, and only twenty, you would have to pay back. So that's how the program works. But Devanya would explain that entire process to you. And I would hope that as many of you take advantage of such a program, you must remember that one of the largest business entities we have here, when you look at the, the Bahamas Striping, the young man that does the road striping and subsequently embarked on other, um, other investments, those individuals started with just a five thousand dollar grant. Now they are multi-million dollar company. So you can do the same, and you can obtain more than five thousand dollars. Some of you may qualify for a lot more, I don't know, but you'll be assessed properly. And you'll have kinds throughout, throughout the program to ensure that you succeed. Many businesses fail, however, we want to ensure that you do not fall within the failed category. We wanna maximize the possibility of success. But thank you very much, and I'm sure I'm looking at future ministers. When we reach that level, don't forget.
I, I know the question in our superior is over, but I'd just like to ask Devanya one question, something that came to mind, it's very vital. In terms of, uh, once, once you get started, and you know, we all, and, um, in the Caribbean, we do have an issue of delinquency. Uh, you, you will be, how, how, um, how militant you will be towards delinquency? And also, before you answer that question, what about the, what about the, um, qualifying in terms of how much capital, just say how much capital someone should have? Because you have people coming with no capital, or you will have something like that, because, you know, as a bank, as an entity, people own loans and they don't have any capital at all. So answer those two questions for us, thanks.
Save the hardest questions for the last. Um, so let's start with, the terminology was militant, uh, militant. Firstly, the loans, the Small Business Development Center will not be directly administering the loans. Those will go through the banks. The main reason it goes through the banks is because we do not have the wherewithal, we do not have the wherewithal to administer a whole bunch of loans. We, I told you, we have, you know, three employees that are full-time, four that are, that are, fourteen that are advisors. So it's impossible for us to do that efficiently. That's why you have the, the, the clearing banks, they do it every day, and they have a very efficient process for collections. So this will not be similar to the prior, uh, government programs where a lot of that administration may have been with the government, which the government is not positioned to do that type of collections. It will go through the normal processes, whatever the normal guidelines of the banks are, that's what it will go through. The difference with this program is your access is fifty times easier because of the relationship and the funding provided by the government. So that's, that's the first thing. But the expectation is that you will be honorable, and you will act with integrity, and that with our systems, there is no, i- if your business fails, it's for market reasons and not because there's mismanagement of funding. That's the goal that, that we hope to attain. Now, when you ask about, um...
Qualifications?
Oh, qualifications. So, the government, again, the support of the government allows you to access the capital without some of the normal, um, um, requirements like, you know, we, we, we have this statement that often happens. It says you need two hundred thousand to go into ball fifty thousand. That's, that's not the way this is going to work. The idea is that with the, with the loans, so we have loans, we have equity, and as the Prime Minister announced, I was leaving that for him to be able to be the first to say, um, we now also have a grants program that we're putting in, in... So I update all of my slides now with this, this new component, because it's an interesting part, and it really is there to help, um, certain types of communities. So with an equity loan over a certain value, yes, there's an expectation that you will have input or injection. That, that may be in sweat equity, that may be in assets that you already own. But basically, ten percent of the, uh, the investment that you're looking for over fifty thousand, there's a requirement that you would be able to, to come to the table with something. With, with respect to loans, that requirement is not there, okay? So in many cases, when someone is coming to get a loan, there's, there's some asset that they're looking to acquire, whether it's equipment or something else, sometimes it's working capital for, you know, uh, a few months of, um, their, their expenses. Um, but our job is to work with you based on, on what your situation is individually, and we will structure, structure your capital in a way to match your cash flow. So if you have a, a business and the cash flow is better suited, suited for an equity investment, we're not gonna recommend a loan, because a loan may actually bury you. In, in the case of the intellectual property and, and a patent, if you were to get a loan on day one, and you don't have the loan payments involved, and you have to start repaying on day thirty, then basically, you know, it may be a year or two years before you can turn that patent into, into, um, revenue. So we have to be strategic with the type of capital that's recommended for, for your particular business. But in terms of the, the loan requirements, if you need a fifty thousand dollar loan for, for a business, you really just need an amazing business. Um, I keep in mind that the banks, the banks may decide to take their time to look through all the options. And if there's an innovative option vis a vis something that they feel there's market saturation, then that might not be the most favorable thing to invest in. Our job is, though, before we even put it forward, we do that type of analysis. We'll be able to tell you, sir, you know, we're happy that you would like to do this business. However, there are a thousand people in this same business, and the margins have been skimming and trending down for the last ten years. Let's see if we could think about something slightly different. And it's our job, we're not gonna push it forward just because it's a government program. If I wouldn't invest in it personally, if our board wouldn't invest more personally, we, we won't recommend it unless we feel so you have a good chance of being successful.
That's a, that's a great question. Um, what if you actually had an innovative idea for the government?
Uh, well, the government, this actually is an amazing question. The government has a policy in place where they would like to encourage small businesses by mandating that at minimum twenty-five, twenty percent of all government procurement will be to small businesses. Am I right, sir? So at minimum, um, I believe there, the government procurement, um, at the moment for this, uh, year is about three hundred thousand. Um, three hundred million, sorry. Uh, twenty percent of that is around, what, sixteen million? My math is correct? So you may have sixty million dollars worth of ideas for the government. What we will do is connect you to the right agency, the right decision-maker, and we'll help you develop those proposals. So there's a difference between developing a business plan and developing proposals. Um, at least five or six of the clients that we've helped thus far only needed help with proposals specifically for the government. Um, and if that's really what you need, um, we still help you with the structuring of the business such that when we put our stamp with you to the government for that proposal, that the government knows that we're gonna be with you for the next three years as we execute, um, that proposal if you're successful in the end. So it's still important to go through business develop, the business development structure. Uh, Parker, you had a comment?
There was a, a couple of questions that have come up with the question, uh, county meeting. Uh, before I wanted you to write on, first of all, the issue of whether it's a bad idea.
Right, so, um, thank you, Parker, for putting me in hot seat with that. So this question has come up, is there any such thing as a bad idea? Um, you know, and, and it's not an easy one to answer, because everybody believes that their idea is a great idea. So the chances of an advisor verbally saying to you that you have a bad idea is slim. They will, though, try to surgically say it, if they feel as though the idea should be discouraged. And, and, and that will only be on the basis of data, okay? If, if we cannot, if we, if you come in with an idea, every idea will go through an analytical process. And in that analysis, if, for example, if the required rate of return, which basically says, look, the thing that investors expect, the return investors expect for this type of, expect for this type of business, the required return for the type of risk of your business is ten percent a year, and based on our best projections, you're making seven percent a year, or five percent a year, then that might be a bad idea, because you could go ahead and use that capital in another way that will yield better, better results, given the risk of the business. So we expect to be using all of the analytical tools at our disposal. Um, at the end of the day, though, we, no one will automatically dismiss an idea. It will have to go through the rigor and the scrutiny of all of us. It has to go through not just your advisor, um, it will also have to go through me before you're told that it's a bad idea. And in some cases, we may push it up to the board, um, so that we never risk throwing away something or, or discouraging something that could have been absolutely amazing. So, so no, there's no such thing as a bad idea, but there are definitely better ideas.
Intellectual discussion, how, there's a retirement age for doctors and dentists. And when they retire, the clinic suffers, because junior doctors don't have the competency, and they're, no, no, not so competent, they don't have the, wrong, a wrong word, the experience to carry that load that the senior minds carry. How do over-the-hill clinicians talk to government to interact with the local clinic in his area so that they can interreact and make that clinic in that area just as effective, working with the junior doctors and making sure that clinic is more efficient and effective to make that, that, the, the product just as good? I'm trying to see if we can work together with government so that there's a partnership that benefits our area and the community.
Okay, so let me start off by acknowledging that, um, I'm happy in this question to be able to say that I do not represent the government. I, I understand that, you know, these challenges happen, um, in, in, in many different sectors, whether it's business development or, um, you know, healthcare and the like. Um, if we, if we, let's say we, uh, were hosting a meeting in the over-the-hill region, and you mentioned this challenge, the only relevance we would connect to us is what can we encourage entrepreneurs, whether in over-the-hill or not, or who like to do business in over-the-hill, to, to innovate and help with, uh, healthcare service provision in that jurisdiction? Um, but in terms of the relationship with the government and that, I, I think if there's a specific concern with respect to healthcare, um, and someone were to come to the center with that, we will direct you again to the right agency to be able to assist you. Um, but I wanna take this, this opportunity, though, to put a spin on what you've said. If there are challenges, and, and Mr. Sands and I were having a deep conversation before we started, with every business or every operation, if you are able to very clearly pinpoint the process and all of the pieces of the process, in many cases, one, you solve many problems, and that's the seabed of innovation. So maybe there's a piece of, uh, some type of innovation, some type of technology, some type of solution that you can monetize to sell to the government to be able to solve the problems that you're having. And if you do think of something, come and talk to us so that we can help you get it going. Any other questions?
I have a question. Uh, you mentioned earlier, also, a couple of the fantasy practices are part of the program with small business helping larger businesses. You also mentioned a Bar Association being part of your organization. Um, does this organization have any plans to implement any legislation so that the business field is a level, is a fair playing field? And I'll give you an example. Let's say that you have a small pool construction company, and I have a large pool construction company. So I contact you and I tell you, look, I was just, um, given an invitation to put a bid of, for, let's say, a new Disney project. I want you to submit a bid at two million dollars, which would be on high-end. It should be on the high end. And I would submit a bid on the lower end, on which everyone gets a job. And I gave you a portion of the work. Do you have any plans to implement legislation for stuff like that?
Well, it seems like that's a nice legislation. Again, I'm not the type of person to purport to know something that I don't. In the legislation that we are already contemplating to assist the development of small businesses, that has not been a consideration. And I do not know what legislation currently exists or is on docket to address anti-trust issues. And so you've just given me some homework. And so my colleagues and I will address it and we'll see whether other jurisdictions who've had this type of small business development encouragement acts in the past, whether they've included any anti-trust laws to support the development. It's unfortunate, it sounds like this experience that you're talking about is not necessarily hypothetical. And there are a number of things that can be addressed through policy and through regulation, not necessarily through law. And so I would say if you become a member of the center, if you've signed up in the last thirty minutes since I gave up the website, when you sit down with the advisor and if there's a specific piece of policy that needs to float up, that's what we're doing now. So we've been collecting policy ideas from September twenty-four and straight up until, hopefully, by February of next year, we would have been collecting all of this information and we're putting it in black and white as our recommendation, as a piece of legislation to support the sustainability of the small business development push. So please, sign up and let's continue that conversation. Yes, ma'am? So, okay, Mr. Prime Minister, I don't know, surgically mean all the hard questions that come up. Nonprofits outside of the concept of grants is something that we have started to talk about. If you have a nonprofit, we're a nonprofit. And as a nonprofit, we had to get a business license. We're actually governed by the Companies Act, even though we're not for profit. And so you are a company, you are a business, you're just not there to create a profit. It does not mean that you do not have revenue streams that can repay a loan, for example, all right? And so in that context, there are, there is a precedent in other countries where there've been loans to encourage the activity of nonprofits. And in their revenue streams, whether it's through donations or through, you know, some of the fundraisers or some of the things that they sell, they are able to repay a loan successfully. And in a nonprofit environment, they can operate more efficiently. And if there are profits at the end of it, those profits are always reinvested into the company and hence it's called a nonprofit because nobody takes home profit at the end of the day. With that long definition, I am hoping that we will begin at some point, not initially, because initially, you know, we've laid out the immediate targets. But there is an opportunity for us to look at, well, what if we support the likes of, you know, the Creativity Happening, Hands for Hunger and some of the other nonprofits on the island? I understand that there are actually north of a hundred nonprofits in the Bahamas. They're employing people, they're doing great work. And if they could show sustainable revenue streams, then there's a conversation to be had about supporting it. I will not make any statements about the new grant funding that was just announced going towards nonprofits. Because our grant funding is specifically to assist with impoverished communities who would like to create for-profit businesses to change their communities and their personal funding values. Yes, ma'am?
What's an example of a sustainable revenue stream for nonprofits?
For nonprofits? Well, for most nonprofits, their major revenue stream is definitely donations. Another one would be sometimes, for example, you have the Bahamas National Trust. I'm sure they charge a cover to be able to go in and see the parks. So the park covers may be nominal revenue, but it is a stream of revenue. And I think as nonprofits become more creative, they will create revenue streams that can help sustain the business and on that basis, could get interesting funding to be able to do so. Maybe some nonprofits will become innovative and in creating pieces of new technology or new processes and monetizing it, they're able to sustain their business and their company for the nonprofit and have a reduced reliance on donations for their sustaining revenue. But it's really a case-by-case basis. Pardis Place, for example, an amazing fundraiser every year that, you know, people just can't wait to get to. They sell out, they've been selling everything for the last couple of years. All right, one more question, we've got a few more questions?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Navarro Smith. I'm not a resident of Kalani, I just want to just make that clear. All right, I'm a member of the over-the-hill. Yeah, all of them, over-the-hill. The reason I'm here, really for clarification, okay? I spoke with the Prime Minister already. We saw now we spoke already, okay? And there's something you said, you know, what stays in my head? You know what I'm saying? Say, teach a man to fish. You know what I'm saying? Teach a man to fish. You understand? Don't give me a fish. You understand me? And that, I take that serious, you know, and that stick, yeah. And I'm a young man, all right? Thirty-eight. This is my wife here. I have six kids. Six, yes, me, young me, six. I have six kids, okay? And my thing is, all right, they were saying that the over-the-hill thing was supposed to empower us, first of all. Because we live over there, okay? Here it is, I was contacting folks, you know, trying to get, trying to get a line to catch a fish, okay? And folks were telling me that, you know, I was keeping in close contact with the person who I needed to keep in contact with, you know. And they told me that you're on the list, do a cleanup. They just had to clean up on the weekend, okay? So I spoke with the gentleman, you know, to find out, because I was wondering, they told me someone's coming up here, call me. So I wondered, no one called me. I know this Friday came. Friday is the day they're working. And God, believe God, for it's me and my wife. I have nothing to lie about. Me and my wife driving, just came from the passport office. And I, I see all kind of truck, all kind of trucking way going over the hill. All kind of trucking way. And I, and two persons told me, five persons, told me, your name on the list, we're going to call you. You understand me? See, my thing is, like I talked to the Prime Minister earlier, this ain't all about me, all right? It ain't all about me and it ain't all about money. Plenty of socialists, all right? In the over-the-hill community, plenty, plenty of people look up to me. You understand what I'm saying? And I could help these socialists. You understand what I'm saying? All I asked, you know, was just for opportunity. I'm not begging, give me some work, please. You know, give me some work. I gave the folks my business license. My car, they go on all kind of the over-the-hill meetings, like all over the place. All over the place. I tried all the way from over the hill to come here. So you think this ain't important to me? This is very important to me. I'm just saying all about politics because we all are Bohemians. They're seeing all over PLP and FNM. This is all about Bohemian, you being a Bohemian, all right? And I'm a Bohemian, I'm a proud father, I have six kids. I lost my mother in January, okay? That's what caused me to open up my eyes to bigger picture in life. My mom's dead in January, okay? And like they say, all I ask for, all right, is for some support. Because like they say, you know, you're trying to empower the young business. Can you say a business guy, just see how it's a young business man trying? Trying, okay? When I spoke to the folks who was in charge of the over-the-hill thing, I spoke to the gentleman, you know, he told me, oh, this was a rush thing, this was a rush thing. See, right now, we only dealing with people who have trucks, people who have businesses already. This would not tell me, and I'm not ashamed to say it. And that is very poor, because the Prime Minister is saying something different. That's why I am here. The Prime Minister said that he's looking out for the young, people who's in poverty, not the people who already have it, all right? I was on the first one. Everyone deserves to live. You understand me? I happened to wake two days later the last cleanup, probably four months ago or something like that. I caught it late. And the only reason I caught it now because I make myself available to get that. You understand me? And I kept in close contact with all the persons who I needed to keep in contact with. I got praises, high praises, young man, you did a good job. I like how you work. You understand me? So definitely we're going to call you again. Now, I know I can't get work all the time, other people have to eat. I understand that. That is understandable. But don't tell me, okay? Right now, we only dealing with people who have businesses, people who have trucks. You have a truck, you have a tractor, you have a payload? I say, no, sir, I do not have a payload, sir. I do not have a truck. But I wake in the last cleanup exercise, so, okay? And I got somebody who have a truck. No matter how small the money is, you don't know what that could do for me and my family? You don't know, okay? The man to tell me, we dealing with the people who have businesses right now, big businesses. And I don't, I have nothing to lie about. The Prime Minister went and asked me, who tell me? I ready to tell him. I see, I want, I just didn't believe.
First of all, I'm listening for all the sense. We do so right here, but, you know, that's hard for anyone. And I'm happy to hear your passion. And this is exactly why we at the Access Center are excited to partner with you. What we're doing specifically for the over-the-hill community, we're working with that department so that we can have a presence literally in the community, all right? And we're going to adjust some of our methodology so that we can have a different level of hands-on connection. But specifically, when it comes to government contracts, we know that there's a, the whole idea of making the procurement process more transparent is to avoid exactly what you're talking about. And so if you're telling me, this is where our advocacy comes in. If you're telling me that this has happened, let's say, you know, you walk in to one of our advisors and we explain this particular process, the first thing that we're going to do is connect with the people who gave out those contracts and make sure we get a notification every time there's an opportunity. Then it's our responsibility to make sure you get the notification. The second thing that we're going to do is literally sit down and find out, well, what's the process? If this is said, we do for small businesses, why is it not going to? We're going to, as a matter of fact, the government isn't aware yet, but by the time the next budget comes up, we're going to be able to say to the government, this is the three hundred million that you gave out for the last year. And we're literally going to count up the money that went to small businesses and ensure that it's over the twenty percent commitment. So the same way, we intend to do that on a big scale, we'll do that specifically in the over-the-hill community. However, sir, you gotta give me a chance to get in. I do not have someone there yet. In the meantime, all of the advisors, again, when they give you the information, any one of those advisors can sit with you, take that information. You don't have to give it to the Prime Minister. This may take him a little while to go through the process, to research that. But I have the direct contacts for the people in that department and our advisors, as your advocate, will work with you, one, to hopefully figure out what went wrong and to put a system in place so that any future opportunities that come up, they won't be able to tell you that same response. Because you'll have someone with you now, an advocate on your behalf, to make sure they don't come with some personal story.
One more thing before I close. To make my voice, just one thing. To make my voice, like I said, the person who's keeping in contact with me, you know, first they told me that they were coming in January. So they called me, I'll say, you know what? Someone come up even sooner than January. They say, look, listen up for the party next two weeks. So the fellow supervisor told me that they send my name on the list, you know. This guy took my name off the list.
Okay, so before we get too deep into that, I want to say that, again, I do not understand the process. But let's talk offline, because there's no way the process should be that manual. And if it is, again, the center will assist with advocating we're going to change that process. Yes, ma'am?
I understand, is there is a link that is missing. You have a, you've made a provision for small businesses, businesses, but there's no provision for the person, as he said, who is not a business person, who is grassroots. Where does he go to be able to access the information? He needs to get a job. The jobs that are there should be published in such a manner that anybody, anywhere, wherever they are, would be able to go directly there to see that the government is looking for sweepers, gardeners, whatever it is, and apply for it. That is a separate category outside of the small businesses. These people will never qualify for a grant or a loan. Never.
Well, no, I don't want to say that.
When I say never, when I say never, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say so firmly. What I mean is, it'd be a longer process for them to be there.
No, no, and I don't want to say that either. So the whole idea of the program especially is...
But they're missing, especially with the link.
Especially with the addition that the Prime Minister gave today. There are specific programs to give these same communities grants and as a young person to provide a new grant. So as a youth, you have special access. And as a person in a impoverished community, you have special access. What you're talking about is being able to pick up the phone and talk to someone, to make sure that these opportunities don't fly around without you having access to it. Now, again, I want to say that I know the government put in place e-procurement processes. Now, what you're saying is, how do we connect that new process and that new technology to make sure that the people who need it most have access? Our job now is, as an advocate, to go and meet with the e-procurement people, meet with the over-the-hill people and make sure they're talking properly so that we don't have this type of thing happening and you need it. So it's on our list now, my colleagues are here. The next time we have this accountability, face-to-face conversation, we will be able to say that there are many improvements made. Here and then in the back. And then, yes, sir?
Good, I'm going to see. Quick question. Is there anything in place for grant-wise, for the purpose of leveraging?